Just called the meeting to order. This is a joint meeting of the school committee and board of selectmen, and again, this is a follow-up meeting on preparing to submit our statement of interest to Saugus High School. So, since our last meeting, a small group was put together to start the drafting. And, I didn't know, does the man who would you want to give an update on the master plan and the update on the high school first?
Sure, the, um, I can't remember if we met, if everybody knows that part, but we've engaged the, uh, the SMMA firm to update the master plan. I don't know if we have a meeting or not, but I'll go over it again.
I think you mentioned it a little, but I don't think, I don't think they had come out.
Okay, so, we've engaged, the town has engaged them to come up and give an update, to update the master plan portion of the high school, of that master plan, on the condition of it, and there's a bunch of criteria that they're looking at, which is part of what we need to use as far as the facilities, whether it's fire and safety, or electrical, plumbing. They go through the entire building and update the TAP A report that was done, and I think O2, there's a few other supplemental, supplemental reports that were done. They'll update that, they've been out to the high school, I think, a couple of, couple of times.
There's been, there's been-
A team of people that have been going through the high school and looking at different sections and different areas. They have collected, and we've provided them with all the reports and all the information that we have. We also, the writing group met and they did put together a sort of, some bullet points of what they intimately know about the building and issues, how they would fit into each priority. I did send that to the firm, SMMA, as, just in case they miss anything, or just as a reference, to make sure that they, make sure they hit every aspect of the structural and mechanicals of the building. So that where, they were supposed to give an update on Monday, Wednesday, Monday, I'm gonna follow up with them, they, they did say they were out to the building a couple of times, and they were gonna sort of give me an update. I think, as far as our schedule with scope of work, they are supposed to have a draft report, I think, by the end of this week. And let's hope, you know, we're gonna push them to make sure that they're on track with the timeline, but obviously, understanding that, we're trying to do as much as we can as quickly as possible. The other aspects of it is when we brainstormed, looking at the requirements for option one to be, priority one to be checked, we need, we would need to have third-party independent reports and assessments done. It can't be done by, it needs to be an arm's length assessment and, and analysis and report. So we, the town, we're in the process of trying to, and time-wise, if we can do it, to have an energy assessment done on the building. And I think that some of the other folks will talk about that, of one of the strategies of, of having a smaller building and being able to save energy costs. If we're able to save X amount in energy, that money would go towards education, and that's a good strategy of looking at that. We sort of talked about that before. The other thing we're looking at is having a third-party assessment on the fire safety, so that they would assess that and look at, and give us a, an updated portion of that, as well as security with the building itself. And those are the three areas that we're trying to engage, obviously, time is a factor, and availability of trying to get somebody out here, so, you know, whether we're able to get all three aspects or none of them, we're gonna do whatever we can to get them out, so that we can add those as attachments to the SOI, and also be able to provide some information from that to help us in writing the SOI.
And just to piggyback on that, Monday's meeting, we also discussed looking into having a handicapped accessibility assessment as well.
That's correct, and that's been scheduled, I think they're coming out Tuesday.
Tuesday.
So that they're gonna do a complete assessment of the availability and accessibility with, under the ADA. So that'll be also part of what would be, I guess, included in the SOI. I think that, you know, someone else can maybe speak on the, on the writing team of it, but I think that, that's what I have for an update, and I think that there's been a lot of progress being made, there's a lot of people that are working and doing things at night and on the weekends to try to at least get some things done.
Thank you. Before we get into the drafting team's report, I do want to discuss this large group, since our last meeting, or at our last meeting, we had discussed that we need to meet frequently to go over as we produce documents, to vet them with the large group. The drafting team has decided to meet once a week, or more if needed, but this group, I believe, would also need to meet once a week to bring those drafts back, bounce them off, and get feedback from the group in direction. So, to do that, I was wondering, and I know to get a large group together is difficult for convenience, if we could just pick one day a week at a certain time, and just, who can make it, can make it, we can send out drafts to all as they become available for the feedback. Is everyone comfortable with that?
I think that's the easiest way to do it, because you never can find one night that we can all make.
Right.
The only thing I would, I would consider, that we should consider, is I think that obviously, the superintendent is the primary point person to sign off, is one of the sign-offs for an SOI, under his, as a position as a superintendent, and it appears that he's not able to make some of these meetings.
Not on Wednesday.
Right, so I would think that we should probably fix something so that he's sort of not disconnected from the process and participating in that.
I was, I was looking at potentially a Monday evening, because that doesn't conflict with FinCom, school committee, or board of selectmen meetings, and wondered if everyone would agree that that's a good evening to meet. Monday?
Monday at six o'clock.
So you're bowling night?
My bowling night, but I'll make it.
And, and the best time is six o'clock?
Six o'clock is a good, is a good time. If you can. One as a representative here.
Because I know there are selectmen that may not be able to make it that early to a meeting, and a lot of other things.
But we'll always have a representative here, we'll work it out.
Thank you. Okay.
I think we're talking about, we gotta remember, we're talking about a really narrow window.
Yes, exactly.
It's already, it's already the fifth, I mean, we're talking about three more meetings.
Where are we talking about having those meetings?
Probably at the ROBE, unless we feel that we need to meet here in case you need a visual for some particular reason.
I mean, ROBE's, I mean, either one's fine, ROBE's probably better set up, we had to go through a lot of configurations to make this work, so, whatever works best for everybody else.
So, we'll meet in the school committee room, Monday evenings at 6:00 PM.
Okay.
Next, I think, turning over to Mr. Woods, do you want to give an update on the drafting team?
Again, we met Friday afternoon was our, sort of our post-it, post-it on the wall day, where we just sort of got together as a larger group, and Peter read through the TAP A report and the Saccolato report, and everyone just sort of spitballed, for lack of a better word, all of the different areas in which we would hit our priority one, three, four, five, and seven, the five priorities we're going for. From that, on Friday afternoon, I generated the list off the post-its, and I sent it off to the, to the, to the writing committee, and some work was done over the weekend, I know, some priority drafts and some drafts were done. We met again seven o'clock Monday morning, here at the high school in AO9, and we continued to work together as a team on the drafts, and then I know there's been a ton of individual work going on. The nice thing about, and I'll show you how it works in a second, that we use in Google, we use in the Google Drive, is that it's a live document. Today, I know, I was able to go on to Peter's document on Google Drive, and I was able to put in a couple of, you know, correct, not correct, but just sort of, you know, edit a few things I saw, and then added a few details about distances, because I know one of the themes we're talking about is the existing sprawl of this high school. And this all sort of started, Peter was kind enough to send a, an over, a Google Earth photo of the, the, you know, bird's eye view of Saugus High School, and it's, it's literally amazing, when you look down on this school, which roughly has about 192,000 feet, give or take, of space, and then you look at the, over the, the bird's eye of the Belmonte Middle School, which has just around 160,000 square feet of space. So, I mean, you're not talking, you know, totally night and day for size of building, yet size of footprint is absolutely enlightening. Mike and I have just kept looking at it over and over, we're looking at it again today, and it's just amazing how sprawled this building is.
If you-
I can bring it up.
If you look at the high school compared to the, if you look at the high school compared to the middle school, the middle school's academic wings, which is one academic wing with three floors, if that was in the high school where it physically sits, it would take up about half of the east wing to the end of the WD wing, and that's it. It only occupies like a back corner of the school, and that's all the academic classrooms. So from a footprint standpoint, it's, you know, night and day difference with what you would get if you built a school that had some efficiency with it, that had some designs that had three floors, that was worried about the sprawling aspect of it. The other thing that Mr. Woods did today, and I just happen to know it, I don't want to steal any of his thunder.
No, steal.
But, sprawling aside, he went to the end of the Towers Gym, and measured from the end of the Towers Gym to the top floor of the WD, we took the two, sort of what we expected to be the extreme points, and it was almost a quarter mile. So, I mean, it was just under a quarter mile.
And the other aspect is you lose the field space.
Right.
For any kind of athletics.
Yeah, and if you look at, if this was all that was the footprint of the building, how much space there is besides the parking lot, and besides the upper field. This is, uh, this is the overview of the high school with the darker portions, I know it's difficult to see, and probably almost impossible to see on TV, but the darker portions of the high school, and as you look at it, this is the parking lot, this is the main office area, this is the Burns Gym, and the Towers Gym, and the multipurpose room, then you have the auditorium, is the circle in the middle, cafeterias and behind that, then you have the, the old shop, and art rooms down here, this is the west wing, east wing, WD wing, A wing, and this right here is the library, which we're sitting in tonight. So what I was saying was, if you, if you drew out the Google map, or went to the Belmonte, all of the academic wing of the Belmonte would fit from like right here, in the building space. That's, I mean, it doesn't account for the cafeteria, the gym, the auditorium, but, you know, from an efficiency standpoint, just this back corner right here, is where the Belmonte's educational spaces is, the, all the academic wings. So I'm not saying we'd model it after the Belmonte or anything like that, but I'm just saying an efficient model, where you use classrooms on both sides, and more than one floor, would increase the property as far as usable property for everything else. And it also would be, if you actually did it in this area, and that's something to be situated, you are about as far away from Route One as you could be, because, I mean, you are buffer for that.
And the other thing we did was, during that meeting on Monday, was, we actually sat, and Peter took and put post-its, little small post-its of where the original structure was, noted where the additions in '60 came in, where the additions in '72 came in. We then turned that over to Derek Serino, he's our computer graphics, one of our graphics teachers, who's actually gonna do, using, what's he gonna use, the paintbrush?
Paint.
Paint, he's gonna use Microsoft Paint, and he's actually gonna take this photo and paint out to back to the original, and then, so we'll be showing you in three stages what, with how the sprawl has actually occurred.
So he'll, he'll black out everything that wasn't in the original, he'll add back in the 1960 renovation projects, and then he'll, then he'll black, and then he'll bring in the 1972-
So when we show the public, we can kind of show how this has sort of expanded and grown, and Peter's done some research on why.
Bring up your Yahoo email, I just sent you the picture of 1956 building, if they wanna compare it. I just sent it to your Yahoo account.
Oh, my Yahoo?
Yeah.
Find that here.
But basically, just to do a quick overview of the build while he tries to pull it up, the original building, the library, I think, ended right here, where you're sitting there, so.
Looks okay.
It had half the cafeteria, it had the auditorium, it had the Burns Gym, had the main office space, it had part of the shops, it had the east wing and the W wing, and I think that's about it. What was added back, and I could be missing some stuff along the line, it'll be easier, what was added back in next was, the A wing was added in, as was, what else was added in 1960? We're putting all these facts together on the report, but in 1960, I got, the multipurpose room was added, the new, the new gym was added in '72, along with the WD wing.
Part of the shop was added in the 60s.
Part of the shop was added in the 60s. So it's been two major-
Did you mention the multipurpose room was added?
Yeah, the multipurpose, yeah. So, so what's happened over time, and what has happened with those additions, is they've been very much sprawled out, because the space was there, or it was convenient, or I think as Peter described it at one point, they went with the most efficient way to do it. They used the area that was not occupied to sprawl out, so you had a situation where you took out the back region.
That's the original building in 1956.
Not common. Not common, common, well, he was.
He was there.
Yeah, this is the shops that were there, they filled in along the way, this is the east wing, west wing, where the first thing they added back here was the A wing.
And the connectors.
And the connectors that went to the A wing, then they built out all over here with the multipurpose, and the, and the multipurpose room, and the new gym. They expanded off the cafeteria a bit, and then they built the WD wing over here. So they really just sprawled out, instead of going up, because of the slab upgrade or great-
They have to use expansion joints to do that, they can't build on top of a wing. And as a result, the, the energy efficiency, the, the heat loss, the, the energy it takes just to walk from one end to the other, is results in a tremendous, you know, impacts on time and learning, students get into class, you have to allocate time, it's debilitating to anyone that's disabled, and that's one of the points that Tom Moxie will make. Tom Moxie is coming out Tuesday, he is a certified access monitor for the Mass Office on Disabilities, and he's also working with the PBD Public Schools on their statement of interest, and he has experience in making these types of observations, and he will write us a report that includes pictures that can be in the initial overview that we send in as an attachment. So hopefully, we can have up to one, two, three, four attachments, the three that Scott mentioned, plus the handicap as supporting evidence about our claim that this building is outdated, it's inefficient, it's sprawling, and it's, it would be, it's, you know, as Tom pointed out, if the cost to make this handicapped accessible is more than 30% of its assessed value, then it's, it's over for the building, you have to get a new one. So, we need to impress this upon the state, and-
Couple of other, couple of other interesting notes before we move on is, I thought, another thing Mike and I did this afternoon, just again casually, we started looking at the Google Maps of Saugus, you know, some, sort of some of the open spots that are around. You'd be very hard-pressed to put this school on any of our open spots, just because of the shape and the sprawl and the whole, the layout of it. It really doesn't fit in any of the possible areas we have left. I mean, besides the fact that just aesthetically, it's just, from the air, it's just gotten crazy out of proportion, Mike, I know, has been driven absolutely to distraction by the fact that when they built this building, and I guess I am too, the east wing and the west wing, they're not parallel, I have no idea why. They just sort of, must have been a dog in the way, and they just made the building go, you know, off to an angle with the east wing.
In the sketch that I have, I have a sketch of what I think the design was, it was parallel, at least it looked more parallel than the sketch.
Somebody had their garden there or something, and they just decided to go around it, because, and the, and the other one I like is the, talking about little, little things you'd never know about Saugus High, our multipurpose room, if you look at that, that's kind, the one on the very end near the white, the sort of coffin-shaped multipurpose room, it's just a little unsettling, actually.
I was just gonna say, I see a lot of people sitting here writing, and learning a lot of this stuff firsthand today, why can't the rest of the committee get this information sent to them, as well as four or five individual people? Just procedurally, this information that people know about, meetings, invitations, people that are coming, that the rest of us don't know about. This is a committee of the whole that should know all this stuff, and not just certain individuals. Just my perception.
Well, I, I can try to answer that, I thought that this committee, I mean, this is less, we, we met a week, less than a week ago. On Thursday, when we met, I thought you told a handful of us to go start putting all this stuff together.
That information should start filtering into the rest of the committee.
And that's what this, that's what this meeting-
But how can we filter things when we're just getting them for the first time, when we come to this meeting? How can we have any input on it?
That was kind of organizing as we went, as I said earlier, as drafts are developed, we'll be sending out all that information to the whole group, so that when we meet on Mondays, we can, we can vet it.
But we've already gonna lose a week by not doing that.
Can I, when, share, we came up with a calendar schedule that the drafting committee would do the work that was suggested each Monday at 7:00 AM, and I think that was made public, that anyone could come to that, and I think, you know, we had a good turnout, and everything's put up in Google Docs.
How does anybody know that? I didn't know that.
I thought you all knew about Google Docs, I'm, I just learned about it.
We didn't know that this information was on Google Docs, we didn't know that there was people coming in to view the, the facility at certain times, maybe somebody here who has the time to do it might want to be involved in it. I'm just saying, as a group.
The last, at the last meeting, the town manager did inform everybody, and, and I was, I was incorrect at the last meeting, because I, I kind of didn't see it happen. The meeting, the last meeting of this committee was Thursday. On Thursday, the town manager said that the SSMA-
SMMA, yeah.
Yeah, they, they were gonna come in, and I said I hadn't seen them. I guess one or two of them had come in on that Thursday, and they did a tour, and then on Friday, literally like 8:30, 9:00 in the morning, they came, right after this meeting, they came in with another group of about six people that did a tour, so much so, that when the town manager, I were emailing back and forth, he was saying he was gonna contact them, I said, "Don't bother, they're already in the building," and in fact, some of them came the day before. Then on Friday, and I was just giving you a timeline, on Friday, it was the drafting committee just sat in the school committee room, and put the post-its up, trying to identify the priorities. I won't go into details, because Mr. Wood already did. And then we decided that if we could get those bullet items sent out to the people who were gonna start writing, then the people who were gonna start writing, start writing. So some of us spent some time over the weekend, working on answering the questions of four priorities, five priorities, that we're, that we're trying to accomplish. So that's what we did, and then we just, we got together one more time on Monday, to just touch base and make sure that, you know, because you don't want to do everything via email, just make sure that all the people who work on writing on, is, are basically on the same page, that I'm not going in one direction and somebody else is the other, and make sure everybody was linked to the same documents. And that's what we did on Monday.
Mr. Hatch, I think, I think what I can do tomorrow morning, if it pleases the committee, is I'll take the original emailed list we got of all the committee members, I will share the documents. Now, we can share them in a couple of different ways. You can share them with, so that everyone can edit, which I'm not sure is the way we want to go, I don't know, I think, because you, you, we did designate a committee to write this and then bring it back, so I think, but read, I could definitely, I can share that with everyone who's in the room, so you can read what the current five or six documents that we've worked on are. That, that can be done, that, that can be done, I could probably even do that tonight before we left, I mean, that could be done, that's not an issue. So that anyone could go on to Google Docs, just have to make sure that you do need, I believe you do need a Gmail account to get on to Google, I think you do need a Gmail account to get on to Google Docs. So as long as you have a Gmail account, and you give me what that is, I can share that, and I'll just change the, if it, again, pleases the committee, I'll set it up so that you have read, read only, and that's, I can do that, that's not an issue.
And, Gina, if I could just say, I'm so impressed with the amount of work you've done, in such a very, very short amount of time, and in looking at the trend of environmentally friendly buildings, and Mr. Minugian brings up time and learning, and it's so compelling what you've just shown us, through pictures and through history, and I just, I'm very impressed with the amount of work you've done.
There's, you know-
It tells a story, just like you said, Peter, it has to be compelling.
Well, and that's what you need, you need the readers, you need this stuff to jump out at them, so when they read about Saugus High School, they say, "Oh my God, how did this get by us?"
Do you know of any other, and this is just, I could go and look this up, but just off the top of your head, if any other schools have applied for an SOI have used this type of visual comparing efficiency or non-efficiency of their existing-
Well, yes, Mount Graywalk, which is in your packet, was a school that was oversized, and they argued this-
I did read that, I did.
That the size as a compelling reason for the new school, which was, they went from 1,600 students to 700 students, and they, that's why I was asking for the energy data. Saugus High School, as of June 23rd, 2013, spent $450,000 on gas. The trend this year is to be 50,000 more, you said, or 53,000? So that's, that's valid data.
That, right.
And so that, and we want to, we want to weave those facts into, into the application. Everything that's been done though so far, I just want to point out, everything that we're working off of has been shared. The Saccolato report went out on a mass email, the, this went out on a, the TAP A went on a mass email, and the PowerPoint the town meeting reacted to went out on the mass email. So, all of the data, it has, is out there for people to see. What we're doing is we're trying to work the questions to reflect the data, and there are some drafts up here that I thought we were gonna share tonight, so that we can get a feel from the committee, and Wendy, I don't know, if you want to share the calendar, we came up with the dates, do you, do you want me to read that?
Yes, please.
We're meeting on the 10th, the 17th, the 24th, at 7:00 AM in room AO9.
It's every Monday.
Every Monday, so come on down at 7:00 AM.
So if it turns out we're gonna meet, the draft committee is, and anybody's welcome to come, is gonna meet at 7:30 in the morning, and then at 6:00, this committee's gonna meet at, at the ROBE at night. So it, it's gonna be actually, from a, getting the information out there, it's gonna be a pretty quick turnaround.
You've done so much in such a short period of time.
And the 22nd, which is a Saturday, we want a tour of the building, and we want to do a scavenger hunt, that we talked about.
Everyone liked that idea, right? They said it'll go a little-
And, you know, some of the teachers, Mike's gonna get involved in coming up with some of the questions, how can you make a visual for the constraint of the ramp in the west wing, or the, or the C wing? Well, what you do is you say, you take two people who are non-disabled, and put a pair of crutches there, or a wheelchair, and you say, "What's it like for you to get up that, that ramp?" So that people can record that, and then you bring them all back and to share their answers. Find in the east wing, the, the power box, the circuit, the electrical box that is, is not secure, where is it located? So people see, they're like, geez, this is a hazard, they're down the shops, they're all over the place, so you need to come up with those, you know, how many, how many skylights are painted, you know, look at, look at right above you, they're painted. This building, when it was built in 1954, the design feature was that it was gonna rely on natural light, being the sunlight, and so they put in all these windows to let in light, they put in the skylights to let in the light, but over the years, the windvils got foggy, and the skylights got painted or replaced, we don't even have natural light, we're relying on 1980's technology to light this building. So, you know, that's the energy efficiency piece, that's the dreary piece. So there's so many ways that you can have the public become aware of the issues surrounding this building, without having to read reams of paper to them, they can experience it and discuss it. So, that would be the 22nd, we agreed that this group would get together and vote, meet and vote on the drafts that you would have by then, as to, for approval, and there's a process here that- a process here that we can share with you, because obviously, this is not gonna be, I agree with Arthur, this will be a better product when more voices are heard and say, "Hey, you left this out," or "Why didn't you include that?" So it's, it's not a territorial thing, it's, it's gonna be very inclusive, but at some point, someone's gotta do the drafting so that the committee of the whole can.
Well, and I think the other aspect is that we're waiting for the updated reports.
Right.
Because that's sort of, that's gonna bring more technical information and structural information that's relevant to, you know, and I think.
It's the evidence that could support all our claims.
The evidence, and I think somebody brought up, it's sort of like trading your car, and the, the dealership is gonna tell you everything that's wrong with your car, because they don't want to give you X amount of dollars for the car, it's the same thing with the school. We need to highlight the issues of why it makes no sense to, the expense of trying to put all new windows in and whatnot, it's just, it's, it's more than what it would cost to put in a building, or, or a high percentage to do that. And that's, you know, that, so I think what the, what we're trying to do is sort of put the framework of the priorities with the themes, so that we, we're able to have the evidence to, to be able to back that up. But it is obviously fast-paced.
Plus, we needed the reports, we had found out we needed documentation.
Yeah, we're writing as if, we're going to get them, we're anticipating what they might say, so that we can amend those reports as we go.
But as we came back today, the intent was to inform the committee of the whole of, of the schedule that we did come up with, and of course, everyone is welcome to attend to those meetings.
And what we did, here's the old statement of interest that was rejected by the state, it's brief building history. This is, I think you all have this, and what they wrote was this, "Please provide a detailed description of when the original building was built, and the dates and project scopes of any additions and renovations, maximum 5,000 characters." Now, we're assuming that a space is a character. Saugus High School was, this is what was rejected, well, the whole document was, but this was included. Saugus High School was constructed in 53 in a brick veneer building. It was des, designed off a main central corridor with two classroom science wings, the east wing and the west wing, a gymnasium, Towers Gym, and a library on one side, and on the other, an auditorium cafeteria core classrooms administration. After 1960, a two-story classroom A wing was built to join the original two wings, and three more core classrooms and a multipurpose room were constructed at this time. In 72, the school added another two-story classroom science wing, the WD wing, two more core classrooms, and another gymnasium with lockers. The library and cafeteria were both expanded during this time. That's it. What I did was, we looked at the, the Mount Greywalk application, which was, was huge, the content, content-rich, and also Franklin. So if, if there's an opportunity to use 5,000 characters, why not use, you know, the, those of you, when you, Frank and, and Mike, when you, when you correct papers, the kids will always use the two pages, they use everything, you sort of gravitate towards them when you read them. So that's just the teacher in me coming up thinking, if you're gonna use everything that you're afforded, then, you know, you're trying to get everything in. So here's a draft, this is only a draft, and it's 4,277 characters at this time, and, but if you count the spaces, it's 5,087, so we might have to tweak it a little bit. So I don't know, Mike, if you want to see what you folks think about, we want your feedback on it. You add it to this too today?
Yeah, who about, you want it? Do you want it?
Not to the hatred, I actually added to the other one, but.
Okay. The gist of it, and I'm not gonna read it word for word, one, because you don't want to hear my voice crack.
Yes, actually, we do, only because you vet it better when you actually hear it, read.
That's right.
Can somebody else read it?
Oh, oh.
But just, just what, what the plan is here is to be more specific, give more details, and.
Make some claims.
And there are some claims here where in 1954, we were obviously living in a different time, and that's why it doesn't necessarily fit the specifications of what we need in 2014.
It starts, it says, "In 1954, exactly 60 years ago, the people of Saugus began the process of constructing a new blank square foot high school to replace the existing structure that dated back to 1908."
Now, the reason why it's blank, we know it's 193, 200 in this report, but we don't know if that is the original building, what, how much was added in 1960, how much was added in 1972?
I sent you the square footage from the assessor's office from 1960.
Yeah, which is.
Because it had been measured since then, which was 175, wasn't it?
Okay. 175 and 60?
Yeah, let me just check.
You got the acreage, right, like 21, 21.1?
Yeah, we got the acreage.
21, yeah.
2174.
Okay. "Community planners boasted of the new efficiency, new $2.2 million brick veneer school was shaved cost by 15% by constructing a mostly single-story slab-on-grade structure utilizing cost-efficient spread footings. Planners also touted provisions made for natural lighting consisting of large panels of wood-framed, non-insulated glass windows inserted into non-insulated walls, connected by corridors that rely on recessed skylights that have long since provided, that have long since stopped providing."
Yeah.
"Adequate lighting." So that's, and now the nice thing about Google Docs, let me show you, is that if I see that, that have long since. And it's done, it's in there, there's no saving, it's just been changed, and you could see, you could look for.
Since stopped.
Oh, since stopped.
And this could be, the nice thing, again, I'm not trying to sell Google Drive, but the nice thing is more than one person can be on the document at the same time editing.
According to the assessors, our building was 175,575 square feet in 1960.
175, what was the last rate?
575.
In 60?
1960.
So that's what the addition is. We need to know the, so we're gonna have to do some more research to get the original, so that's where we can use some help.
SMMA may have the, from the, the original plans that they've taken.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
One of the things they also grabbed was they have the blueprints, so I'm sure the blueprints aren't staged.
So we gotta make sure before we pay them, we get that information.
And, and I guess to speak a little bit to Arthur's point, the use of our time tonight is probably, would be probably better suited if everyone had this and could discuss upfront, I agree, I do agree. I just think you have to keep in mind, this whole process started on Thursday, we met on Friday and spitballed, we met on Monday again, this has been a very hurried process to this point. So when you let us know that tonight, I can, like I said, I will make that adjustment in the morning, and if we can correct that. That's what we need to get for feedback, though, as we're writing this, is that kind of correction, so that we know we're going the right path. I'll continue to read. "The town owned the expansive 21.74 acre site which allowed for the adoption of design of construction techniques."
Mr. Woods, real quick.
Yeah.
That same sentence you changed and added, "long since stopped," I think you want provided to say providing.
Provided, providing.
Yeah.
Okay. Providing adequate lighting.
Providing. I guess that's how you want, as we see things, just yell them out, I guess?
Well, maybe at the end, on that, you know, at another meeting, but this is, this is a sample of what the process is and how we're trying to.
Yeah, 'cause in, in future meetings, when we have a copy of this prior to it, we'll be able to.
Yeah, absolutely, it should be like correcting minutes.
It'll be a lot quicker than doing it live, so, yeah.
So this is, this is sort of the gist of where that, the, and again, well, in the interest of time, we'll just sort of say, this was Peter's attempt and then some revisions of the, the history portion, that 5,000-character history portion. All right? You want me, if you want me to continue?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Back up here, you're getting one, yeah. Why do we use this technology?
Town owned expansive utilized accommodate post-World War II housing boom. Although the building has now achieved its 50-year projected life by, exceeded, that actually should say exceeded, not achieved, has now exceeded, and I'm, we can, I'm not gonna make the change now, we can make, somebody make it on paper. "Projected life by a decade, structural base envelope and additions added in 60," we're gonna find how many square feet, 72, "has resulted in a sprawling maze-like horizontal edifice. The original building was designed off the main central corridor with two classroom science wings, the east, that should say the east and west wings, not the fast in the west."
That's what happened, you crap your pants.
A gymnasium, the Towers Gym, and a library on one side, and on the other, other, the auditorium. And, yeah, Wendy, you can make those as we, see, Wendy can make the corrections right as we're here.
Yeah.
And this is a live document.
And that's what my head now. Great.
If you want to make the one up here that said, "Has exceeded."
Change, change to exceeded.
Change to exceeded.
Achieved to exceeded.
Mike, oh geez, now I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have Hashem on too.
The teachers are past.
Signed up for me to. On all phones.
Towers Gym and Library on one side, and on the other, the auditorium cafeteria core classrooms and administrat. I think that should probably say, "And administrative offices."
Achieved.
I think, and administrative offices.
Yeah.
Good. This is just what it should be. This is exactly what you want.
Mike, you want to come down in here and say?
Administrative.
Administrative offices.
Right there.
Wrong.
Right? Yep.
Okay. "Because new construction must always be horizontal with appropriate expansion joints, the lateral footprint of Saugus High School has been, has consumed badly needed field as well as open space. The design and layout are incredibly inefficient, expending excessive amounts of heat and electricity to achieve its mission. The time to travel from one end of the building..."
Yeah, to the other.
Okay, yeah, "from one end of the building to the other is excessive and impacts efforts to increase time and learning."
So that's where you add that detail, that you, the 2.2.
And you know what? Is this included in the other document? Did you cut and paste this into the overview?
No, I haven't, I haven't done anything yet. I don't, I don't believe I did.
Okay, 'cause I think I made some changes to the other document that read just like this. "Second phase of construction was done in the early 60s and consisted of a number of small additions to the existing school complex. A two-story classroom and link structure was added to the south side of the original classroom wings. This addition, again, utilized spread footings, a slab-on-grade first floor, and open web steel joist with concrete on, on steel form deck."
On steel form deck.
For the new second floor, an open web joist and steel roof deck at the roof. The frame is supported on steel columns with masonry infill walls and masonry veneer at the exterior. This phase of construction also includes single-story additions for a shop and home economics classroom on, off the east wing, on-off.
Where?
Off, just take, just get rid of that. Off of the east wing of the original shop areas. Foundations, again, consist of spread footings with slab-on-grade first floors. The roofs are framed with steel beams with precast concrete planks supported on steel columns and masonry walls. The last addition to the second phase was a multipurpose room at the west end of the original building. This area has open web steel joist and steel roof deck roof framing bearing on masonry walls. The foundation and first floor are similar to the other additions. In 1972, the final set of additions was started. A large two-story classroom addition was added to the east end of the original building classroom wing. The construction for this area continued to use spread footings and slab-on-grade at the first floor, steel beams and open, I don't know what that's supposed to say, open, not wets.
Wall, should be wall.
Open wall?
Yeah.
Open wall steel joists with concrete slabs at the second floor, and steel beam and steel joists with steel roof deck at the roof. The steel frame is supported on steel columns with masonry infill walls and has masonry veneer. This phase of construction also included the addition of a new single-story.
Gym and locker.
Gym and locker facility to the north of the multipurpose room. Construction is similar to the classroom addition. Three of the infill additions were also constructed at this time, a small single-story library addition located between the original classroom wings, a small single-story addition between the shops, and a single-story addition to the north of the original cafeteria to enlarge the kitchen and cafeteria areas. Construction for these areas is similar to the above, except that the cafeteria kitchen addition has steel and concrete framed floor with a crawl space underneath. In 1954, design along with the 60 and 72 additions are incapable of supporting specialized as well as differentiated learning environments. So the totality of all three construction phases are especially harsh and unnecessary punitive. Harsh and unnecessarily punitive to students and adults with physical and sensory handicaps who should be able to access all parts of the building without barriers and obstacles. Also inherited the building's original design and two subsequent additions are 43 entrances with posed security risks which are unacceptable for school abutting and easily accessed off ramps of a major highway, Route 1. The structure as well as mechanic, electrical ventilation and fire security system is now well beyond any reasonable trained observer would characterize as useful life. Indeed, the 2000 NEAS accreditation report cited Saugus High as outdated, unsafe, and unable to meet the needs of a 21st century learner. So that's our new history portion.
And you compare that to this, you see what I'm saying? So, so I would ask you, if you were a reader or an evaluator at MSBA, would, would you look at that and say, "Too much?" Or would you want to see that?
If I could, the only thing that I would say, Peter, you did great detail into the construction.
Which came as a lift, lift from this.
Sure. What I'm saying is, the construction of today, would it be different and more efficient if you could, because you, you did a great job describing it, but I was like thinking to myself, would it be different today, how it was built?
Oh, well, yeah.
Cost-wise or?
You know, that's a good question.
Or environmental-wise?
Would there also be, along that, sorry, along that, 'cause I, it means nothing to me as far as some of the details as far as that goes. Would it, is there a, a new way of doing it, terminology that you could put as opposed to today's?
Slab-on-grade is a, is a technique that's still used. What, look, but the point I tried to make at the beginning, post-World War II, you think of the Campanelli subdivisions up in Denver, there's a lot of slab homes, and they had the heat running in the foundation, and a lot of those homes were added on to. But I also learned from, you know, our friend Charlie Thomas, who said that, look, he remembers when Saugus High School was built, that they were in reaction to a horrific fire that took place in California of a multi-story building, and so the argument that came into the community that he recalls is that this would be safe, kids could get out quicker in the event of a fire. Now, that's somewhat anecdotal, I don't know if it's worthy of including here, but it sort of makes sense, because number one, you had this expansive site, it was cheaper to build, you didn't have to dig a foundation, if you've ever constructed anything in your home, you know the foundation's a big expensive part of the deal. So, you know, they saved on the foundation, you had all this land to keep going this way, and look what we have now as a result.
Maybe the building commissioner or the state code, I'm just saying that when I hear people speak, 'cause my husband is a union carpenter, and when I hear them speak about what they use for materials, it seems like everything is very high efficient, environmentally friendly, you know, it just seems very different to me.
Maureen, I think the thing you have to be careful of is, we were either at the 5,000 if you include the spaces, we're approaching it very quickly, so you have to kind of contain that to history. I think there's other parts, when we start talking about priority five, when we're talking about the savings. I mean, just the mere fact, just the simple mere fact that these are all single-pane windows.
Right.
And zero insulation, I mean, brick has its own insulation value, has its own R value, but just in the roof structures themselves and, and the windows, just in those two areas.
So when you're at the spot, you can do.
Yeah, I think in priority five, we can talk about that.
Can I also ask the same question? I'm sorry. And like, in the opening paragraph, like, you said something about how it was supposed to be, you know, lighted by skylights and everything else, is this the area that you say, and those, of course, were painted over, and we don't have that type of lighting or?
I think that, this is the priority one. I wish we had the other format of.
But in answer to Maureen's question, I think would, that would come out more once you got accepted in the program and did the feasibility study. That's when the feasibility study.
Will we talk about the priorities of those issues?
Right, I think, I think conceptually what's happening is that, I think maybe somebody can go over the different priorities categorized, because these is all categorized, and I think that's, that would give everybody a better idea of the format, so that category So that category one, this is what you're trying to explain, category three, this is what we're trying to explain, that way there, because, you know what I mean, that's, I think, sort of conceptually, people aren't compartmentalized.
After you get the feasibility study done and then you work on the conceptualization of what kind of building you want.
No, but I think what they're talking about, what we are going to do is incorporate what we could have, because if you could do, because of these things aren't energy efficient, or because the windows have contamination and then there's an expense to remove that because there's asbestos and all these other things, even in the parking, in the single pane, that by, you know, by saving and putting a new building and having energy cost savings, you're looking at a couple hundred thousand dollars, that would go towards education rather than energy costs.
If I were to take something away from your history that you have written here, if I took one thought, if I was reading it, it was that you have an old outdated building. If that's what you wanted to leave me with as I read that, that's what I took away.
That's not fixable.
Old and outdated.
They do have a section called building envelope that we have to fill out. Please provide a detailed description of the building envelope, types of construction materials used, any known problems or existing conditions. And you could use 5,000 characters. What was rejected last year, all they wrote was, the building exterior is a brick veneer and characterized in good condition by the 2001 TAPES Association feasibility study. That's all it said. It doesn't say anything about, you know, the slab on grade, you'd have to use expansion joints, the efficiency of solar. So this is an opportunity to go 5,000 characters there. The other issue you brought up was about the lighting, who brought up?
Well, I was just saying that I just, my question was just about, that you're saying that that's what you're trying to focus on as well and.
Well, type of window, single pane, double pane, other, please describe. And so there's an opportunity there. So, yeah, a lot of, there'll be a lot of redundancy in this, but the idea is that if you throw it out there.
Would it be helpful if we shared the list that we first started developing this from?
Just hit a priority first.
Yeah, just go, in other words, re, somebody maybe just go over the priorities and what they're asking for each priority.
In each priority, in each priority, priority one is talking about the general overall building safety. Okay? Priority three talks about the loss of accreditation. Priority four talks about projected overcrowding. Okay? And I think we've done, we have a huge building that.
Isn't just, isn't just inefficient.
It doesn't mean 21st century size requirement. As big as it is, as big as it is, it doesn't function properly. Priority five talks about energy conservation and what would happen in an upgraded building and where those costs could come in. And I heard Scott say something, go 200,000, I would venture to guess, you're probably looking north of a half a million dollars in energy savings in a building of this size, going from what we currently have to what we would have. And then finally, priority seven talks about the impact on school programs and your ability to deliver curriculum in a 21st century mode. You know, just the mere fact that, when I did a walkthrough today and I found that this building is one quarter of a mile from the corner of the gym to the corner of the WD wing, okay? Unless you're an Olympic athlete, three minutes to pass the hall, if you had gym and a stop at your locker and had a class in WD wing, you're not making it to that class on time. You know, I did another one from my office in the A wing to the central bathroom, which is basically the only functioning ba, not the only functioning bathroom, but the one we keep open, it was .11 miles. It's a tenth of a mile to go from the A wing to the bathroom and back.
Mr. Woods, real quick, I keep, when you were reading this, I couldn't help thinking how effective the Google Maps views were in describing each addition, even when you were pointed out. And it sounds like you're going to have a teacher who's going to be blacking out and showing that progress. Is it possible, and I don't know if other schools have done this, but referencing those photos right in this answer, for example, this addition was added.
I believe, I believe we found that it is. There's a bunch of places where there.
I'm not sure necessarily in the opening statement, but where there's priorities, whenever you're considering the priorities.
Absolutely.
There are spots where you could footnote it, so to speak, to say.
Because it's attached.
It's attached.
Yeah, because seeing this, because you're describing each addition, it just seems like an appropriate place to put something like that.
And in each priority, and this is important to note, in each priority, it starts to ask you for, I mean, below this.
There, in each priority, there's basically three main questions, some have more.
The first question says, please provide a detailed description of the perceived health and safety problems. This is again for priority one. Attached copies of orders or citations from state and our local building and our health officials, which we're talking about doing, those are all the reports we're looking for. As you scroll down, question two, and I think you should also note here, these are not limited in my, from what I know of the SOI, these are not limited by characters, the priorities. Question two, please describe the measures the school district has taken to mitigate the problems described above. Because I'm going to be very honest with you, the MSBA also doesn't like if you say to them, "We've had these problems for years." No, we've done absolutely nothing about it. They want schools that have kind of said, "Yeah, we've tried, we've re-roofed it, we've tried."
Put an elevator and.
We've done, you know, we've tried to make these corrections. What's left are things that are beyond our scope. We can't correct what's left. And then the final phase of the question, and again, this is for each priority, says, please provide a detailed explanation of the impact of the problem issue described in question one above on your district's educational program. This is where we can talk about the fact that the amount of money we're spending on lighting just is limiting, a limited school budget to begin with. Please include specific examples of how the problem prevents the district from delivering the educational program it is required to deliver and how students and or teachers are directly affected by the problem identified. So this is the place where we can talk about, okay, this is what a new building would do for us. You know, this is what the energy efficiency, this happens to be the health and safety, but whatever priority, they all have those three guiding questions that you have to answer.
So there were a couple of these, three we had checked off on the last go-round. So we've started where we ended with those three priorities, because the information, a lot of it's the same. We're going to have a lot of information, hopefully, from the report that we're getting shortly, to add the details to it, but the foundation of priority three.
Three, five and seven.
Three, five and seven are there. So what we've started to do here now is attack our one and four and get those going. So that hopefully, we knew we wouldn't be finished for this meeting, but we were hoping for maybe by the time we get back next, now it turns out to be next one, Monday afternoon, our hope is that with the draft committee working independently and then coordinating again on Monday, that we start to get, and once we get the report naturally, beyond writing the narrative part of each of the priorities, we start filling in the details and the evidence from the report. Those combinations leave us these, this pretty much having the priorities finished, which would go a long way on having this done.
It's sort of setting up, I think we talked about three themes and weaving that in and then sort of making it so that it's compelling within the answers, but then the reports and the different things of the evidence that are attached as the backup.
It would be helpful if you all would really analyze these, the areas that we've checked off, the one, four, five and seven, and had your own, come in with, what do you understand that to mean? So that when you read these, when we go over this again, you'll say, okay, that sort of hits what I, what I thought it meant or whatever. And I think what I'll set up tomorrow, Michael helped me do it, is we're going to set up, everyone's going to have the ability to read and comment. I'm not sure about edit, but comment. And I think you can.
If there's, if there's somebody who's a very good writer here.
That wants to have edit abilities, have edit.
Because again, that's, that's one of the things, and I, sorry, I walked out to get my Chromebook while we were doing some of it. It's this kind of discussion that'll help, but this doesn't have to be limited to tonight. I mean, we're not going to naturally go through the five priorities like we did the opening statement, but as, once you get this shared, we all have those documents and we all could be online at the same time.
But for each document that we create, there's a place here that says, "Add a comment." So you can add, you can add whatever you'd like to add in that comment box.
Show what that looks like, Frank, if you did it. How would, how does that appear?
Puts it on the.
Frank Wood says for priority one.
Does it stay to the side and then you can decide?
It stays to the side.
Stays to the side. And then, and then not only that, but also you can make notification changes so that when you make one, it'll say to the group, Frank Wood has made a change.
Might be better off bringing that at the meeting.
Yeah. Well, you can, because if we.
I feel comfortable doing a comment, but only a comment.
No, that's what I'm saying. No, that's what I'm saying. Check spelling.
Send an email to everybody, something like that.
But it would be helpful for everyone to see the comments there, because you might have picked out, oh, somebody already commented on that, or they commented on something that made you think of something else.
So what does it look like once you click it?
For everyone to see is very helpful.
Check spelling, if you think I spelled incorrectly.
Where does it stand at?
I'm guessing if you scroll over the highlighted portion of the top, I'm guessing that priority that was highlighted, if you scroll over that, it might pop up.
There it is right there, it's on the side.
Yeah, okay.
The left right?
It's off on the right. You went on and it clicked on what your comment is, so that highlighted portion.
But what I was saying was, I think it's important that I, I think it's important that I set it up so that at least the writing committee gets an email that says a comment's been made. And I can do, we can do that also. I can, I can notify everyone that a comment's been made if you want. Again, I'm at the whim of, I'm at the women's wish of the committee. However, I think probably at minimum, you want to, you want the people that are doing the draft writing to get that there's been comments made.
Yeah, but like Wendy said, if Wendy makes a comment and then I wanted to make the same comment, I see she's already done it.
Arthur, I can absolutely set it up so that everyone in here gets pinged all day long, you know, with emails. That's not an issue. You get, I can set it up so that email notifications, let's see how you set it up, notifications, replies to you, replies to all. So we'll go off, everybody that's, everyone that's attached to the document gets an email that says, "Hey, Mr. Fid made a comment."
Can you opt out of that? No, seriously.
Absolutely.
I mean, I would feel comfortable commenting, but I think the drafting.
All I need then, before you leave tonight, is we'll start a paper around, I have the email, we'll make two columns. Does everyone here want it shared? I think that's probably.
I think we'd be, I think.
That would be great.
We all want to get it shared. And I'll just make a, if you, let's, let's do it this way, if you want out of notification.
Well, the other thing, Frank, is that it doesn't, if, even if you don't want to be someone that makes comments, that doesn't mean you don't want to come to the meeting and say, "Okay, this is my comment."
No, 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 make no mistake, these are all going to be shared to everybody in this room.
Does, does everyone have a Google account first? And if there's anyone here that does not have one?
I have one.
Anybody?
It's Gmail.
You don't know?
Yeah, I just have to give a different email.
I'll pass this around, says no notification, just simply.
Me too.
Okay, if you don't want to be notified, put your name on here and then you will have comment abilities, you'll have readability.
If you have a different account other than what you gave me that first day with the Gmail, if you could just forward it to me, I'll update the list and that way.
Tomorrow morning, I'll, I'll share it out to everybody.
Just if you could put what time, what time we can call, up to what time before you go to bed. Are you talking to me? Yeah.
He didn't.
This is if we don't. He wants it all night long.
The question I have.
And if someone does not have a Gmail account, those are email-able.
They're free, yeah.
Yeah. We can email them to those individuals.
The only question I have on my part as part of the draft committee is, because this is why we had this meeting today. One is to show you what we did, but two is to get feedback from you, are we going in the right direction as far as this group? It's only a handful of people trying to do.
What we said at the last meeting, and it's just been my experience, that he was right, that you're telling a story, a compelling story, and now you're just waiting for the data to plug in. So you've done a tremendous amount of work. You are a very good storyteller, Peter.
Do you think the superintendent will be able to attend these meetings on Monday?
Mondays he will.
I think it's really important that he's involved, so lab would change.
Just another comment on people attending and not attending meetings. I don't think it's appropriate that anybody should make any disparaging remarks or comments when somebody doesn't attend a meeting, because people might have personal situations or work requirements and, to think that somebody does not have a commitment because they can't be here for certain meetings or certain days, does not reflect on their interest and concern about doing a new high school.
Well, I agree, and I think that that was emphasized earlier in the meeting when I said not everyone will be able to attend.
I think the select will say they're going to have to.
We're going to probably have representation at times, but it does not diminish the interest of all five members of the board.
Or anybody else.
As you said, Arthur, everybody who's here has a very strong interest in supporting these efforts, but not everybody can be everywhere all the time. And everybody here understands that and recognizes that, so there would never be disparaging remarks made in regards to somebody's not being in attendance.
I would hope not. Is there anyone else here that has?
What was that all about?
Wants to change.
The eyes, you look like you have anesthesia over there.
Is there anyone else that wants to change their email that I?
I changed mine on there. I gave it to.
I need you to put it on here so I can change the group.
Okay.
I have the main group. Does anyone else need to change from what originally was given to me for your?
Mine's on. I'm Laura.
And is anyone that does not have a Gmail, you need to change?
Yeah, because I think I have my work email.
Yeah, I think I do.
Could I ask a question while the, while the drawing around some of the drafting committee?
If you do not have a Gmail, could you just notate on there and then I'll, I'll make sure that we email all the documents to those that do not have Gmail, okay?
Could I just ask a question of the drafting committee?
So next Monday when we meet, you are hoping to have all five of the priority points done and just putting in data?
We'll be, we'll be all on the, right now, we're on the way, again, the data's a holdup and some of the, some of it is easy, some of it is easy to make the statements on, especially, and I'm not trying to say it, but especially some of the ones that have already been written, where we're just looking for more current, accurate data.
So my point is, we can go ahead and give you comments or.
Oh, give us all the, yeah.
And then that ADA meeting that you're going to have is Tuesday, so you'd be waiting for a little more information.
No, if anybody's got comments, the sooner is better than the latter to get it out there. I mean, not just, not just the little comments like if it's a spelling issue or words are in the wrong place. One of the, like, if anybody happens to come across and figure out for confirmation what the square footage was on the original building after the 60, after the 72, if we had those numbers, if anybody came across them at any point, if, the sooner you.
One of the things is, maybe I'll, I'll talk to the firm and see, I'm sure they have an ass.
But if there's, if there's facts that you, when you stumble across some of these and there's a fact that you know, because some of you, as we're sitting in the draft committee, some of, a lot of us are Saugus High graduates, so you walk these halls, you may have graduated either before the addition or after the addition.
Easy, careful.
Yeah, well, no, no, I mean, but it's, it's, there's an institutional memory that exists with some of you and some of the people that you might know that could, could actually give us some details that we don't currently have. Anything like that would be appreciable as well, so.
Last time we talked that you might do a video of the.
Yeah, we have, we have not done that yet, but what we'll do is do a video of the.
No, when you do do it, as we go to certain areas like the skylight, have it narrated that this is the skylight that's been painted.
Right.
Mentioned on.
We're going to voice over.
I believe what we did, what we were thinking about doing and talking about doing is having, having them.
Like Charlton Heston.
Having them. Having that somebody, having them go around and film and be pretty extensive, because we can edit out that fact. And then have somebody, obviously not me with my voice like this, but somebody with a better speaking.
Morgan Freeman.
Exactly. Have them narrate over the top what we want to get across by the video. So I think that's a great idea. We talked about it last, I think that's what we, yeah, is we'll do the rough video so that we have all we want to see and then have somebody narrate over and try to articulate most of the deficiencies. Yeah. I think it's a great idea.
And if people want to help and check on some of the historical information, you can go to the library website and they're all, they've uploaded all the town annual reports, all the yearbooks, but the town annual reports from 53, 54 and 55 have a lot of information from the town manager and so forth, because I think it's critical that we, we have the accurate footage on the buildings. They specifically asked that and total building square footage, please provide the original original building square footage plus the square footage of any additions. So we need that information.
And I think the best source for that is probably going to be the blueprints.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll just-
Well, maybe if you ask them, and they'll save some time like that.
I'll contact them tomorrow.
The reports, actually, I believe are on the library website, aren't they now?
Yeah, that's what I just said.
Yeah, they're at the school safe, actually.
Would the registry of deeds be of any help, Mr.?
Yeah, I suppose, yeah. We're looking at piss on our drive.
The other thing, Peter, I don't know if you touched upon it, or anybody touched upon it, maybe I missed, but about sort of like the theme of the sprawling, the energy and the ADA issues is sort of the-
And the obsolescence, the age. Three themes.
The first one was the sprawl.
Sprawl.
Yep.
The accessibility and the obsolescence.
Which ties into the energy. That's really the overall sale, sell of the-
I guess that's a good question, Wendy, to ask people, do they agree with those three themes? Did we, can we come to an agreement as a committee of the whole on that? Was that a result of Frank?
I think that was Frank.
That was a bunch of people throwing post-its on the wall and saying, what, you know, what's underlying by all of this?
What's the major themes?
Would it be helpful if you threw the list up there so that we can-
Do you have the, Frank, do you have the list?
I do, I do.
Why don't I have my groups in?
And this process that we went about was, we, we took the five priorities and basically, and I know Frank said this already, Peter went through the reports and was, you know, going through some of the deficiencies. So anytime a deficiency came up that we thought was something that has to be addressed in one of the priorities, or more than one of the priorities, we put post-it notes all over the walls, and then we sat back and looked and said, do these deficiencies lead us to say this is a priority? And in every instance, the answer was yes, but now we really have our themes and our areas of deficiency that lead us, leads us to that. So this is just, if you look up, this is just the phrases that we came up with for priority one. You want to zoom out just a little bit more, because you're going to have-
What is moving all over?
It's right, and we're not going to, we're not going to necessarily read it all, but-
Well, let's read, you want to read priority one?
Yeah, we can read priority one, it's gas piping.
No, I mean, what, what the, what the priorities are.
Priority one is the, the safety of the-
Replacement or renovation of a building which is structurally unsound or otherwise in condition, seriously jeopardizing the health and safety of schoolchildren where no alternative exists.
And these are the things that we came up with as a, kind of like a bulleted list to, to target with on, can everyone read that?
Yeah.
So these were all, these were all things that came up from the TAPA report and from other reports that we just put as post-its, and then I just made the list.
And it's info, a lot of it's the info.
Yeah, it starts with gas piping, protective covers over fin tube radiation. We actually looked at what a fin tube radiation is, it's in the east wing, and you can see it's all on the, it's basically its baseboard, but it's, it's set very high in the walls. Was, is the chimney line, that's a question we keep coming back to, we're not sure, so we're going to try to find out. Configuration of the building, the air exchange ventilation, that's a huge theme in this building. We're going to find that in classroom space, in gym space, in bathroom space, in hall space. Handrails and stairs, emergency lighting, entrance safety, and egress, fire sprinklers, the fact that we have a bit of a mold, not, not a widespread, but there are some areas where there's some mold issues. And again, this list continues down. Fire alarm system, ADA entrances, gymnasium floor, gymnasium foundation, gymnasium ceiling, security cameras, asbestos, bleachers, floor tile finishes, floor tiles and finishes, slab on grade foundation, hallway air circulation, ventilation, the use of electric extension cords. We're using electric extension cords everywhere in this building, just simply because we don't have the outlets. Auditorium stage lighting, we looked at that the other day, the fact that, I mean, we still have a cage that they legitimately, some classes, some schools have asked to come in and see our lighting cage, because it's, it's still 1954, and they want to show their kids what the old technology looked like. It literally has the, the full arm, you throw the lights and pull them, it's pretty amazing. Some termite issues. And then we just continued on, water shut offs, emergency generator, antiquated electric, auditorium air exchange ventilation, the combustion air delivery to our, to our boilers, HVAC delivery and all the mechanical systems, piping again, general piping, not gas piping, just the rest of our water piping, et cetera. The fact that we have, we run exposed coaxial phone and CAT 5 cables, almost anywhere you look in this building, you'll see just exposed cabling, not necessarily in the library, but everywhere else in the halls. The idea of a central air exchange, lighting, interior, exterior, lavatory air exchange ventilation, cafeteria air exchange ventilation, in our science lab air exchange ventilation, inadequate electrical supplies, non-sync, non-code sync drains in the science lab, school-wide classroom communication systems, drainage, parking lot surfaces, curving, abundance of unmonitored egress exits, exit points, non-ADA compliant auditorium mezzanine. These were just all the things of health and safety that we came up with on our bulleted list. And then we continued, and we said, okay, now what fits for, and these are much smaller priorities, much, much fewer points, but not any less important.
Because if you look at the priorities, they're almost more case specific. So naturally, it's not that these aren't important, they're just different and very case specific.
And some of them fit into the category.
Some of them overlap. Some of them are going to overlap. So again, priority three, priority four. I think one of the things that we came up with on the ADA, and I, I never realized this until we started reading, I forget what we were reading, we found out that ADA is supposed to have egress points from both ends of a single hallway. So even though we have an elevator in the WD, we're not technically ADA compliant, because you have to get to the elevator, which is only at one end of the hall. If the fire was between you and the, and the point of exit, it's not ADA, it's not ADA accessible. We learned that as we were uncovering some of this, some of this information. You know, things about priority four, like about our space, yes, we have this huge sprawling building, however, we have non-square foot compliant science labs, we have undersized and non-hipper-
By how much, Frank? That's important to put, by how many square feet?
Absolutely, right.
Well, you'll have that.
We'll have that. I mean, undersized, non-hipper compliant offices, nurses, main, guidance directors, all of those, none of those are hipper, will fit current standards, let alone the programs are trying to expand here. Even in this big sprawling building, storage is at an absolute premium, there's nowhere to put things, because it was designed for a time when literally you taught with a piece of chalk and, and a green board. I mean, things have just changed. Main gymnasium lack of seating, I think we, we said our gym holds about, I think it was 450 people, and that's not taking into account, that's using all of the gym space. We tried to, about three years ago at basketball, we tried to put our players and coaches and scoring table on one side of the gym, because that, if you go to current stadiums, that's the way it's set up. It's not a good circumstance to have the coach coaching a team right here while the player's father is sitting, you know, one seat away right behind the bench. I mean, it's not, it's not a great circumstance.
So is that the same theme as the nurse, the privacy issue?
Absolutely. So we tried to push that in one game, and we found out on a Tuesday night, you could do it, but as soon as the Friday night game came and there was a decent sized crowd, you didn't have the square footage, you couldn't do it, you had to put it back. So we did try to correct it, but you couldn't. Under with halls, I did a measurement, our hallways, all the hallways at Saguas High are eight and a half feet wide. I would, I would invite any of you to come through here at 7:25 and walk, and this is in a building that is not, you know, when some of us went here, we had classes of 400 plus. The classes aren't there, we only have just shy of 800 students in the building, but try to pass through the halls, that quarter mile stretch in an eight and a half foot hallway when there's two kids at lockers that are opposite each other, it's, it's constrictive. Undersized student lockers, we have thousands of lockers, they're just tiny, they're old and they're tiny, and they don't necessarily work anymore. So again, that's priority four. When we get into priority five, priority five talks about roof, windows, boilers, lighting, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy related costs in a school facility.
Yeah. And then seven is the final one, which talks about impact on school programs.
Replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. That's why you've got to bring in your local mission statement and district goals.
Absolutely, you know. So again, if this wasn't shared with the group, I would be more than happy to forward this email off to everybody. Actually, it's now in the-
I don't know if it's in the shared.
It's not in the shared? Somebody uploaded it. If it's not, I will put this in Google Shared, and I will share this out with everyone tomorrow also. I'll make myself a note of that. Okay?
Does anybody have anything else to add?
So where do we want to go from here? We'll just meet on Monday, depending, we'll have time so you can review the documents as you get into the folder that you'll receive access to, be deleted tonight or tomorrow. I'm going to update the email list and notification to those who do not have a Gmail account. I'll certainly make sure that that goes out to email to those individuals, so you'll be able to, you know, read the documents in advance, and if you have any questions, comments, certainly throw them out in an email or through the comment on the Google Docs.
I, I'd like to make a suggestion that we set a milestone for Monday, that we all be able to review the complete background data, we saw just one piece of the history, as well as one in three. So if we could set that, to get those done up here, so that we can all have that conversation on, on three major components, that would leave four, five, and seven.
It must be 7:30. Is it 7:30?
It is. Why? Because it's quiet?
Because the shut down. Kia's got the whole system to chest out when that is 7:30.
Are we still meeting on the 8th?
No, no, the 8th, sorry, the 8th got changed to the 22nd.
It was the 15th, yeah.
No, I think originally was the 8th.
Do you have enough time, should we be meeting on the 22nd? Time of day?
There's a question as far as the tour, whether it was going to be the 8th, and the tour got changed from the 8th to the 22nd, and now the question is, at what time?
The tour isn't time sensitive, and we thought it best push it out and really organize it, rather than focus on this.
But the literal time of day, it's going to be in the morning.
Saturday, yeah.
Saturday morning, most likely. We were talking 8:30, but that's not set in stone yet.
Do a tour, it's not set in stone, we can set that. Thinking in the morning.
And if anyone wants to work on that project-
That's a good one.
Yeah.
You will have a few members of the board of selectmen have conflicts for the 22nd. At least, like-
In the morning?
Yes, the entire day. This is Saturday.
So Monday, the 10th, is at 6 o'clock, correct?
Our next Monday, the 10th, yep.
And if anybody from this board right here wants to, if they can't come in and no time is convenient to get the group, if you need to come in, just email me, and I'll tour anybody who wants to go around the building, around the building in this group, and point out whatever you want to see. So if you, if anybody in this committee starts reading over the priorities, you take a look at the lists, and you have some questions, and you, you know, if you have some questions right now after this, I don't mind taking you around, so I mean, or find someone who can.
Can they come on Tuesday with Tom Ochsis here? Is that something you-
I mean, I don't, I don't necessarily want to do that, because he's doing some consulting at that point, I want to let him do his job, but if, if anybody wants to, you know, email me and let, you know, say, I'd like to come in Wednesday afternoon at, at 2, just let me know, and if I, if I can make arrangements, we'll make arrangements.
He'll make sure I'm here.
Well, somebody, somebody-
That's the arrangement he's going to make.
Yes, if I can't be there, I just have to make sure Frank can be.
Thank you for making Frank available to us.
The next meeting on the 10th. The location of that meeting?
I thought we decided on the 10th is going to be on the road. If you want to come to the draft committee, 7:00 AM is here.
7:00 AM, 7:09.
I'm good.
If you want to come to the general meeting here, it's 6 o'clock at the road.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to know, on the 20, you just said, said if anybody wanted to be on the committee regarding the 22nd, what were you looking, how many, and for, to do what?
I'm just looking for some people to help organize it. Like we said, we thought, yeah, we thought that was, that was a great idea last we met, and I still do.
I'll help do that. Me too, I'll do that.
That would be a-
I can help if you guys have any. If you want to add.
It's going to be a lot of fun, I think it is.
Are we going to have a prize, like for the best?
Do whatever you ask.
Yes. There should always be a carrot at the end of the trip.
See if you can find the hilltop cow.
The cow. Wendy, I have a question. We have the joint meeting in for April 3rd. You still want to leave it at that night, or do you want to move that to the Monday? Is 3rd going to conflict with anybody, or do I move to the 31st to keep the consistency on the date?
I really like the idea of having the joint meeting on the 3rd to vote the SOI, because that gives us some room to get this complete, ready, voted and out.
It's April 11th, correct?
Oh, I understand that. I didn't know if you wanted to leave it on Thursday that week, or if you wanted to move it to Monday, for you having the Mondays.
It's probably a tweak meeting, but, I mean, we can-
Whatever you want to do.
If it's ready, it's ready, we can, we can do it that day, but we'll know better as we get.